Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Alodian Moore's Pradium, Antay Kalorani. The acronym is ANPAC, I'm the Chief Judge of Coastal Court. Today is Class 172. Class 172. What did we learn in Class 171? Well, ANPAC's study session, keeping in mind it's a Moroccan perspective, right? Because I'm Moroccan and the nationals of the Empire Morocco are Moroccan. And as Moroccans, we're trying to do our best as an educational platform to teach the Americans of the United States of America the truth. The truth regarding what? That the Empire Morocco of Moroccans, and the Moroccans are commonly known as Moors, that these Moors come in peace. You see, the Moors are trying to do our best to educate the citizens of the United States of America as to the law and history of what has taken place in this continent and other territories throughout the Moors' empire. You see, in Class 171, we started breaking down exactly what's going on with the gerrymandering regarding the United States and the internal state commonly known as the State of Texas. You see, in Class 171, I was attempting to have a conversation with one of the House of Representatives of Texas by the name of Ann Johnson. Right? Now, that conversation was also about Jasmine Crockett, who's also a House of Representative of Texas. I'm trying to let both of them know as to what's going on. Why is the federal government performing gerrymandering? Why is the State of Texas also adhering to the orders of the federal government to maintain gerrymandering? It's because in Class 171, we started to learn that the capitalist society, which is the white supremacy society, the white supremacists are capitalists. Capitalists want to control all laws, courts, economics, and social affairs of the country. And in doing so, what they're starting to do is to create hardships for black people, black Americans, that is. But the capitalists know, which are the white supremacists, they know that these black people that they call "black" are actually Moors. They know that beyond a reasonable doubt. Well, how do I know that they know that? Well, first of all, they know what the law say of the treaties. But also keep in mind, we were reading out of a dictionary called Etymology Dictionary. Who do you think created the Etymology Dictionary? It was the white men who created that dictionary. Within the dictionary, it starts to talk about who these black and Negroes are. They're Moors. More specifically, they're Blackamores. They're Moors who have been blackened to be called a nom de guerre or a misnomer in order to put them into a caste system of crayons. So in Class 171, we started exposing the fact that the capitalist society is starting to panic and they want to remove Blackamores from the governmental seats of the United States. They want to remove them from the governmental seats of the internal states. They do not want Blackamores in those seats anymore of government. Why? Because see, the capitalist society, which is the white supremacists, because they want to keep a superior position of controlling laws, courts, economics, and social affairs, they know that the Empire Morocco has declared its independence. And by doing so, the capitalists know it's time for those Blackamores to do what? To pledge their allegiance to the Empire of Morocco and start to become the representatives and the lawmakers and the law enforcers of the Empire Morocco as Moroccan nationals. You see, the capitalists know that they can't stop the Empire Morocco from decolonizing. So at the very least, they do not want to compete with Blackamores who are still American citizens. While simultaneously trying to compete with Moroccans who also have a powerful pen because now they represent a country that has sovereignty and jurisdiction over the capitalists. So the capitalists do not want to deal with Americans who are adopted citizens. The capitalists want blacks to go and pledge their allegiance to their Empire Morocco and get out of those seats. Go home, is what they're trying to tell you. How do I know that? You've gone from being a whole person, being a black person allegedly, to being able to vote. Now they're making laws where you're one-fifth person. You see, they're creating hardships to make it difficult for you to remain being an American citizen. They're trying to force your own hand to do what? Repatriate back to your original state, which is the Empire Morocco. But in order to repatriate back to your state, first you have to become what? An expatriate, ex-patriate of the United States, meaning what? You have to renounce your citizenship of the United States of America. They don't want you to be American citizens anymore. They want you to be an expatriate and then go repatriate back to your mother country. Keep in mind, the land we stand on is commonly known as North America is a shared jurisdiction and sovereignty of the Empire Morocco and the United States of America. Two countries are maintaining sovereignty and jurisdiction within one landmass. They're not expecting you to pack up your bags and sell your house and move across the oceans. They want you to come under a different jurisdiction. For example, right now, the United States, along with some of the Cherokee countries, are working side by side to make sure they make it easier for freed men to become what? Cherokee nationals again. You see, black people now will call themselves Cherokee because now the Cherokee country is accepting them under Daw's rule. Are they getting a ship and going anywhere? No, they stand in the same landmass. The Cherokee country shares the same portion of land as the State of Oklahoma. State of Oklahoma and the Cherokee country are sharing sovereignty and jurisdiction over the same latitude longitude of land. But the Cherokee country is also sharing sovereignty and jurisdiction with the United States of America. I just named three states. United States of America, Cherokee Country, and the State of Oklahoma. That's three states right there and there. Share the same latitude longitude. Then what makes you think the Empire Morocco can't do the same? You see, there's four states in this territory, in this region, called North America. There's who? The Empire Morocco, United States of America, State of Oklahoma, and the Cherokee Country. That's four different states. Controlling the same latitude longitude of a defined territory commonly known as State of Oklahoma. You see, it's just that simple. So in Class 171, I was talking about what? We have to learn how to share, right? To get back into the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. We must become partners again to become good neighborly states with each other again. The Moors and Europeans have been living together for centuries. Not days, not weeks, not months, not years, centuries. This is not a new phenomenon. So in Class 171, it was all about how can we shake hands and get back to the diplomatic relations of sitting at a round table to determine how we can maintain peace and security in this region of the world as Moroccans and Americans sharing the same landmass together. That's what Class 171 was all about. But we must also take away from Class 171 about the definitions that we were looking up. Then in the definition of white, there is a subsection that talks about white supremacy. And white supremacy is defined as what? It said, meaning what? Maintaining subjugation of Negroes. So if white supremacy means subjugate the Negroes and the Negroes are Moors, that means this small group of people that call themselves white supremists, which are actually the capitalist regime, their number one job is trying to keep Moors subjugated. And how have they got away with that for a couple hundred years? You see, they just simply misclassified the Moors and put them in a crayon status called "black." See, it's called a caste system, which is racism. The caste system in itself is racism. We'll talk about that more today. But at the end of the day, what do we take away from Class 171? That we all have to learn how to get along. And the reason why I say that is because treaty is the supreme law of the land. The language within a treaty is supreme. And the capitalists and the white supremists know that the Moors' treaties are the supreme law of this land. So they know that at some point, they gotta get along with us too. But in the meantime, they're trying to stay quiet and put all the Blackamores into a status where they have hardships in order to force them to go back to the jurisdiction, the Empire of Morocco, and pledge their allegiance to the Constitution of the Empire Morocco and recognize his majesty, the Sultan, again. That's what's happening, alright? Alright, let's get into the class. Have a long class today. We'll cover a lot of material. Hopefully, it all makes sense. At the end of the day, I'll, you know, get to a conclusion. But keep in mind, this is a continuation, right? Talking about gerrymandering, right? What's going on in Texas. But at the same time, you must understand this is the same ideology that's happening all throughout the United States. The United States federal government knows that the Empire Morocco, i.e. the Moors, have declared their independence. And now it's time for the United States of America to come to the round table to start to create diplomatic relations with the Moors again, alright? So let's get into the class. As the Moors know, I always open up the Constitution. The Constitution is paramount. What do I have up here? This is the Constitution for the Empire of Morocco, the country. The external country, right? The Constitution was signed by the Sultan on June 3rd, 2024, giving it the full weight of the state. But who signed it first? The legislators and the governors. They signed it first on February 29th, 2024. The Sultan signed it on May 13th, 2024. Alright, so this is what we must understand. That we're checking boxes of how countries and states start to maintain what's commonly known as their sovereignty. Your sovereignty and jurisdiction comes through your constitution. Your constitution not only identifies the land, but it also identifies the offices of the government. Alright, so that's what we were missing is Moors. We failed to have a Moorish government of the country. But Moors were claiming they had a Moorish government of a temple. Wrong answer. Moors were claiming they had a government of civic organizations. Wrong answer. Moors would claim they had a government of their privatized charters. Wrong answer. We had to have a constitution for our country that's called the Empire of Morocco. Alright, that must be understood. Alright, let's move on. Alright, so all the Moors would need an internal state constitution, internal state. Such as the State of Texas has their own constitution. But the State of Texas constitution comes under the sovereignty and jurisdiction of the Constitution of the United States. The United States federal government has subject matter jurisdiction over all of its internal states of the Union. Alright? So the Moors would need the same. The Moors would need their own internal state constitutions for each of the defined territories. But keep in mind, the internal state constitution, such as ANPAC as an example, comes under the sovereignty and jurisdiction of the Constitution of the Empire Morocco. We're sharing the power, you see? Alright, let's continue. Alright. So with this illustration up here, this gives the Moors an understanding of what the Empire Morocco is all about, right? The Empire Morocco, that's the name of the country, is the external sovereign independent state. The Sultan is head of state, that's an office. The Sultan's office is for seven years. It's a seven-year office, it's no longer a monarchy. It's an office, the Sultan is elected by the people. What people? Moroccans. Americans cannot vote for a Moroccan Sultan. No different than the fact that Moroccans can't vote for an American President of the United States. You must be a national of your country in order to vote for your representatives. So the Sultan's office is for Moroccans, not Americans. The Moors keep saying they're Americans, that's a lie. You're not American, you were adopted to be Americans. With your natural origin nationality is Moroccan. This is why it's Morocco, right? It's a country, Morocco. What's the nationality? Moroccan, that's number two. What's the short title for Moroccan? More. And the Moors are called what? Moorish. So it's Morocco, Moroccan, more, Moorish. How the hell you get American out of those four words? I don't care what type of soul train, Scrabble board, crap you doing, moving words and consonants and vowels all over the place. You cannot get American out of word Morocco. This must be understood. We have to stop this foolishness. You notice the Moorish Americans can't prove nothing they say, nothing. Yeah, man, see, you move this word over here, you take this word, put it over here, you do all this stuff, and that's law. Yeah, we gonna go by that. Yeah, that's it, that's the answer. They can't prove nothing, they just made it all up. They won't show you not one treaty to prove what they're saying. They won't show you not one international document between countries. They won't take one document, not even one loose leaf piece of paper that they can find on the worldwide web between France, the United States of America, and any other European country and the Sultan. They will never show you one thing that proves all this crap about the fact that Moors are Americans. It's not true. Moors are adopted Americans because they were naturalized. That can be proven in treaties. Listen. The Empire of Morocco was an external sovereign independent state that has the Sultan as head of state. Then you have three different branches of government. You have the executive branch, legislative branch, and judicial branch, right? And what are we trying to do? We're trying to help Moors subjects, right? Help Moors subjects do what? To return to Morocco and pledge allegiance to what? The Constitution of the Empire of Morocco. See, once you pledge allegiance, the Empire of Morocco's government, one, two, three, the government can then recognize you as a Moroccan. Right, so the WRC, the Trustee Ship Council, which is trustees, will help the Moorish subjects to become Moroccans again, but pause. Why is it that when Moors reach out to the WRC, why do you have to refer yourself as a Moorish subject? Well, first of all, we learned about that in Class 171 when we was reading over what? The Moroccan-British Treaty of 1856. They always refer to Moors as what? More subjects. And so does all the other treaties refer to Moors as more subjects or Moroccan subjects. And sometimes they refer you as what? Proteges. So the word "more subject," but what does "subject" mean? What is that? What's a more subject? Right, but first of all, Moors is an adjective, right? And "subject" is what? Okay. What is a subject? Okay, real straight from the top.
The term "subject" refers to an individual who is under the authority of a monarch or sovereign, often without the same level of rights and freedoms as a "citizen." Citizens are members of a state with rights and responsibilities, such as the right to vote and participate in government.
Alright, from the top again.
The term "subject" refers to an individual who is under the authority of a monarch or sovereign, often without the same level of rights and freedoms as a citizen. Citizens are members of a state with rights and responsibilities, such as the right to vote and participate in government.
Alright, so Moors according to treaties were Moorish subjects. But "subject" doesn't necessarily mean citizen. Pay attention. The term "subject" refers to an individual who is under the authority of a monarch or sovereign, often without the same level of rights and freedoms as a citizen. Another word for citizens, what? National. So "more subject" is like when Great Britain, Great Britain called all of its people what? Subjects, British subjects. So what that means is whether you have pledged allegiance to the country or not, if you're within the territory, they still call you what it's "subjects." You just automatically become a subject. So all the quote-unquote copper-colored people will list it as Moorish subjects. The word "Moorish" is an adjective, it's a description of who? People who are under the authority of a monarch or people that are under the authority of a sovereign, often without the same level of rights and freedoms as a citizen. Meaning if you haven't pledged your allegiance to the country, then they just consider you a subject because you're just kind of floating around like a nomad in the territory. They want you to pledge allegiance to a country. Until then, you're just a subject. Okay, listen. So a Moorish subject, we're trying to help the Moorish subjects to do what? Return to Morocco and pledge allegiance. Until then, you're just a Moorish subject. But the reality is, the Moorish subjects now come under a sovereign called who? The United States of America. Because the monarch, which was the Sultan, allowed the United States of America and other European countries to what? Naturalize the Moors, meaning adopt the Moors. So the Moors who now are referred to as American citizens have now declared themselves as Moorish subjects, meaning what? They're in a halfway house. They're going from being an American citizen, now they're declaring to be a Moorish subject. And "subject" means you haven't technically pledged your allegiance just yet. You're stuck in the middle. And then last but not least, you become what? A Moroccan national. So you go from American citizen, Moorish subject in the middle halfway house, then what? Moroccan national. So what we have to understand is when you're trying to pledge your allegiance to the Empire of Morocco, you're still an American citizen, you're still naturalized. So like I said, you go, what? American citizen, right? Of the United States. Then once you get to the halfway house, which is the WRC Trustee Ship Council, the Trustee Ship Council will put you in a status where you're halfway there. You're now a Moorish subject again. And from being a Moorish subject, the Trustee Ship Council will then move you into what? Becoming a Moroccan national. You see? So this is the reason why the arrow's going backwards. Why is it going backwards? You gotta go back to the original status of being what? Moor subject. Then you move forward, right? You leap into the future, become Moroccan national. In other words, you go back to 1880 Treaty, Treaty in Madrid, July 3rd, 1880, Article 15, Paragraph 1 says what? "Any subject of Morocco that's been naturalized in a foreign country shall return to Morocco and choose between the entire submission to the laws of the Empire's Moroccan government." So this is what Moors have to do. All the subjects of Morocco have to return and pledge allegiance. But you're going back to the treaty language of 1880. And then we'll do what? Catapult you back into present day as a Moroccan national. So now you dropped this word. So now you're becoming Moroccan national instead of a Moorish, which is adjective, a Moorish subject, now you become Moroccan national. That must be understood. It's very important to understand. Alright, let's continue. Okay, now what do I have up here? This is a case at the International Court of Justice. Right, we've touched on this briefly. Well, in the past, we went and read quite a bit of it. But we're going to revisit this again because we're talking about the entire case this time around. Now, as a reference point, everyone can go to the website of the International Court of Justice and pull up this case. Just type in "France v. United States of America ICJ", and you'll see the website and this will pop up, right? It says "Rights of Nationals of the United States of America in Morocco." France v. United States of America. So the United States of America, the United States of America is in Morocco. Because Morocco is an empire, it's vast. It stretches over continents and islands. The United States of America and its capitalist white supremists know that the United States of America is where? In Morocco. Therefore, the United States of America has to adhere to Moroccan treaties and Moroccan law. This is why the capitalists are panicking because the Empire Morocco has declared its independence to do what? To be the beneficiaries of the Moorish estate. It's an estate. And all the Moors are beneficiaries of it. But our estate ended up in Probein and went into a shallow grave. We had to find a way to get it out of the shallow grave by what? Declaring independence and drafting a constitution and restoring the Moorish government. Alright, so, okay, in this case, we will not, I'll say again, we will not read the case today. But what I would like to show people is that what is it that the capitalists know and why are they panicking? Why are they doing gerrymandering? Why are they trying to put Blackamores in jail? Why are they so aggressive with indictments? They're trying to remove Blackamores from seats. At the same time, trying to make sure Blackamores can't vote. Why is that? It's because the colonists want to create hardships. It's because the colonists want to create hardships. And quiet as kept, they're in their feelings. They, they're upset that the Moors are now getting reclaimed their inheritance, which is called the Great Enterprise. The Great Enterprise is all the monies that are collected by the several countries that are in the Empire of Morocco, such as United States of America. That gross domestic product of somewhere around twenty-seven trillion a year. They know that they owe the Moorish empire, i.e. the Empire of Morocco, a percentage of that twenty-seven trillion. They know that. And capitalists do not like to share. Listen. So in this case, I'm taking the time to narrow, narrow down this corner, you see that? Look how I narrowed down this corner, look. Look how I zoomed in, watch this. I'm going to show you something. What is the capitalists upset about? Well, first of all, they know it's all about treaties. Treaties is the supreme law of the land. Whoever controls the treaties is supreme. So when I say whoever controls it, who's the who? Whichever country and its government controls the treaties controls the land, because treaties are what? Supreme law of what? The man. Listen. So as I narrow this down, watch this snapshot I've done, watch this. What are the colonists, i.e. the capitalists and white supremacists upset about? You see, capitalists want to control what? The currency. They want to control currency. They want to control what? Economy. Right? But they know that treaties control currency and economy. The whole world ran off of treaties between countries. But what's the problem? You see, these treaties, who, who is the person in due, due course? Who is the owner in due course? Who owns these treaties? Was the Moroccans. See, it's the Moroccan economy of what? Morocco. So the capitalists want to control the currency and economy of Morocco. Because the United States of America has put all the Moors, i.e. the Moroccans, in a what? Protectorate status under naturalization. See this word right here? Protectorate. So all the Moroccans are the protectorate. And who's put them up, who put them under protectorate? The capitalists. And changed their name, changed the Moroccans' name to what? Black. You ever heard of a person called Count de Kinte? Count de Kinte's name was changed to what? Toby. So you used to be Moroccan, now they call you Toby. What's another word for Toby? Black. So the United States capitalist society, the white supremacists want to control currency and economy, but they know that the treaties are what? The supreme law of the land, and who controls the treaties? The Moroccans of Morocco. And the capitalists, i.e. the colonists, want to be supreme and control the Moors and call them black. That way they keep the Moors in the protectorate. And if they keep the Moors in the protectorate, that makes them the trustees. And if they're the trustees over our state as Moors, they get to control the currency and economy of the Empire of Morocco. Now, one of the most powerful treaties on planet Earth, on planet Earth, is the General Act of Algiers Eras of nineteen oh six. We won't read it today, but you must understand that capitalists know that this treaty and its one hundred and twenty-three articles set forth a mandate that the capitalists must pay the Empire of Morocco. They're paying what? Taxes. They know that's written in a treaty. And they know who's supposed to collect the taxes. Who's supposed to collect the taxes according to the treaty? It is the Moorish government. So in order to keep the Moors from collecting taxes, what do the capitalists do? They put the Moors under a nominee gear called Blacks. Because blacks can't collect taxes because the word black is nowhere in what? The treaties. Guess who else cannot collect taxes? Moorish Americans. Why not? Because Moorish Americans' names nowhere in the treaties. Guess who else can't collect taxes? African Americans, because that name is nowhere in treaties. Guess who else can't collect taxes? Anybody calls themselves what? Hebrew, Hebrew Israelite. Their name is not in the treaties. Guess who else can't collect taxes from the United States of America? Everybody calls themselves Indians in Cherokee. Their names are not mentioned in the Moorish treaties. So they put, they blackened the Moors and after that, they gave them all types of misnomer names. In order to take you out of the treaty, because if they can take you out of the treaty, you remain in a protectorate status. And as long as you're in a protectorate status, they're going to give you a Toby name instead of calling you Moroccan, they call you Toby. What's another word for Toby? Black. All the blacks are still under protectorate called naturalization. And I'll say it again, the capitalists are controlling the currency and the economy of the Empire of Morocco. So now that we've declared independence, now the Moors are doing what? We're saying we're no longer under your protection. We're no longer what? Naturalized or adopted. Now we're just simply what? Moroccans. And the Moroccans get to control what? The currency and economy and treaties of what? The Empire of Morocco. You see that? This is what the capitalists are concerned about. You got to understand how I took that snapshot just from that corner alone. See that? Alright. Now that I, I've expressed that to you, we won't read this just yet. I'm building up, just let the Moors know, we will be reading over this entire case. It's a lot of pages. It will take quite a few study sessions to get through it. But please be patient with me because I have to build up. I won't read it now because I got to first go backwards in history in order to take you forward to this moment in time of nineteen fifty, of this case was nineteen fifty. But I got to take you backwards basically to the eighteen hundreds and nineteen hundreds. So be patient with me, alright, as I build up. Because I have to show you what the white supremacists have done to the Moors. I'll also have to show white Americans what the white supremacists have done to the Moors, because you got a lot of white people don't have a clue. They're just as dumbfounded as everybody else, because they would never taught none of this in public school. They were never taught none of this in their colleges. They don't even know their own history and they don't realize their history is controlled by laws that the Sultan has signed with all the heads of states of the European countries. And the white American citizens have no clue about how powerful the Moorish government actually is. But there is no Moorish government if the Moors don't pledge their allegiance to the Empire of Morocco. Listen. So in class one seventy-one, we started talking about crayons. Today's class, once again, will start to talk about that again because I have to tell you about the law and history. I have to take you backwards to understand how Moors end up becoming crayons. How did Europeans and Saxons and Caucasians end up becoming a crayon? You see? So this image up here is about Crayola crayons. That white people call themselves the white crayon and they got the black crayon for blacks and they got browns for hispanics, et cetera. It's the crayon family. It's called a caste system. From the top, Brother Dre.
Human beings are not crayons. Referring to people as crayon colors is an act of racism. Racism allows the crayon color white to have privileges over the crayon color black. The crayon caste system allows lawmakers to subordinate, um, to subordinate and naturalize Blackamoors. The Moors have been blackened by the white sup- uh supremacist party to keep the Moors from knowing their identity as Moroccans in Morocco.
Alright, again, from the top.
Human beings are not crayons. Referring to people as crayon colors is an act of racism. Racism allows the crayon color white to have privileges over the crayon color black. The crayon caste system allows lawmakers to subordinate, naturalize Blackamoors. The Moors have been blackened by the white supremacist party to keep the Moors from knowing their identity as Moroccans in Morocco.
Alright, so the white supremacists know that the indigenous people are Moors. But what they did is they blackened you and called you black and they just dropped the word Moor. But the capitalist society knows that the blacks are Moors. They know that. But if they keep you in the black status, that means you are not referring yourself as a Moor. If you're not referring to yourself as a Moor, that means there's no way you can understand that you're what? Moroccan. No way you can understand you're Moroccan. Because if you want to still use Moroccan, then you'll be trying to pledge your allegiance to the Empire of Morocco. So blacks are Moors and Moors short title for Moroccan. And Moroccans are from what? The Empire of Morocco. They never wanted you to know that. So they put you under Toby status of black. And this is what's happening, so this white crayon, right? Called itself the white supremacist because it wants to stand out from the other crayons of the caste system. You see, when this entire system is broken, because no one's calling themselves a crayon anymore, the world will start to heal itself. You must understand why this caste system was created because on planet Earth, there's no country called white. And on planet Earth, there's no country called black. So where did black and brown people come from? Nowhere, it's just a made-up caste system. Because if people actually took the time to talk about nationality, nationality is a name, it came from what? A country. And countries have sovereignty. Crayons do not. Listen. You see this right here? Free white person. Free white person, okay? Let's learn about the free white person, okay? This is a statute from the year seventeen ninety. It has been updated since seventeen ninety because now they have the Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy. But in seventeen ninety, which was one year after the Constitution of the United States of America was fully ratified and put into full force and effect. The United States of America's government did not start to govern until seventeen eighty-nine. And in doing so, the Congress came together, which is Senate, House of Representatives, they passed a Naturalization Act, which is a statute, and they passed it into law. Alright, so let's find out what happened in seventeen ninety. How did Europeans turn? Why? Okay. Your brother, uh, Dre from the top.
Chapter three, um, an act to establish a uniform rule of naturalization. Section one. The enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives of the United States of America and Congress assembled that any alien being a free white person who shall have resided within the limits and under the jurisdiction of the United States for the term of two years may be admitted to become a citizen thereof on application to any common, uh, law court of record in any one of the states wherein he shall have resided for the term of one year at least. And making proof to the satisfaction of such court that he is a person of good character and taking the oath or affirmation prescribed by law to support the Constitution of the United States, which oath or affirmation such court shall administer and the clerk of such court shall record such application and the proceedings thereon and thereupon such persons shall be considered as a citizen of the United States. And the children of such persons to naturalize, uh, excuse me, and the children of such persons so naturalized dwelling within the United States being under the age of twenty-one years at the time of such naturalization shall also be considered as citizens of the United States. And the children of citizens of the United States that may be born beyond sea or out of the limits of the United States shall be considered as natural-born citizens provided that the right of citizenship shall not descend to persons whose fathers have never been resident in the United States. Provided also that no person you to for prescribed by any state shall be admitted a citizen as, um, afore said except by an act of the legislator of the state in which such person was prescribed. Approved March twenty-sixth, um, seventeen ninety.
Alright, so this is about naturalization. Okay, so what happened? The, the Anglo-Saxons and the Caucasians, i.e. the Europeans, who were coming into the thirteen colonies that were now called the United States of America, all of those people who came into the colonies all had nationalities. They were all quote-unquote Caucasians coming from other countries. When they came in, they were already recognized by their countries. So the United States of America turned around, they what? They had to turn you into what? They turned Europeans into what? Aliens. All Europeans were turned to aliens. What does that mean? That means they said, okay, you're renouncing the nationality of your previous country. Now you've just become an expatriate. Once you become an expatriate, you go immediately into a status of what? A neutral zone where you become an alien because no one else has recognized you. See, your country recognized you. Then here, then you go into this middle zone, right here, you become an alien because your mother is not recognizing, because you said you don't recognize your mother no more. So you go into this neutral zone called alien. And from alien, then some other country does what? Adopt you. So in seventeen ninety, the United States of America was adopting other Europeans who wanted to be expatriates of their countries to now become what? American citizens. That was seventeen ninety. And what did they call them? Free white persons. You see, so only white persons could be citizens of the United States of America. This is seventeen ninety. What's my point? So when you understand, when they, when they created this status of white person and then you fast forward and then they naturalized the Moors in eighteen sixty-eight, well, they wasn't going to put the Moors on their white person's status, they had to put the Moors under what? Black. To make a distinction of the adopted child that was a Moor. The Moors immediately became second-class citizens. Who was the first-class citizens? The white persons. It immediately created a caste system when the Moors were adopted. So the Moors went from what? The Moors were what? Moor subjects who then went into a status of what? Alien because the eighteen seventy Naturalization Act had what? Aliens of Africans can become citizens. So they call the Africans aliens, but keep in mind Africa is not a continent. Africa is a planet. They called all the Moors African because they did not want to refer to them as what? Moors. They was like, nah, let's stop calling them Moors. Let's refer to them as just simply African because African is a generic word. So in eighteen seventy on the Naturalization Act. They called everybody African. That way they can make sure they never called you by the nationality of your country. Always remember African is what? An ethnicity. It's not a nationality unless you say what? South African. Out of fifty-four or fifty-five countries of Africa, only one of those countries has the nationality of African. And it's called South African, not just African as a standalone word. So what we have to understand is when the United States started to naturalize Europeans. They did the same thing to the Moors. Now you notice in this Naturalization Act, they did not refer to a certain country. They just called them aliens. They didn't say, uh, aliens of Europe. Because if they said aliens of Europe, guess what? Europe is not a nationality. Europe's the name of continent. There's no country called Europe. There's no one with the nationality called European. There's no nationality called European. Because there's no country called Europe. Therefore, the same thing applies to the word African. There's no country called Africa. It's a continent of Africa. Therefore, there's no nationality of African. Unless you're talking about South African. But there was no South Africa until when? Until the eighteen, excuse me, nineteen sixties. When South Africa became a country to give itself the name of South Africa. But back in eighteen seventy, when they naturalized the Moors, there was no country called Africa. There was a continent. So you have to understand that when they created the free white person. And then they adopted the Moors, they couldn't call them Moors white. They called them Moors black. So the Moors are what? Blackened. And the Europeans was what? Whitened. You see how they created a caste system? But in the caste system, they're not talking nationality. They're talking crayons. And in the caste system, guess who's on top? Guess who's on top of the caste system? The whites. The whites are at the top of the privilege of being a white crayon. And all the rest of the crayons just follow suit, their second, third, fourth, fifth in seniority of the crayon family. You see, white supremacists call themselves white supremacists. They don't call themselves American supremacists because then that would be a nationality. You see, they don't want the blacks to find out their nationality because if the blacks find out their nationality, then nationality becomes superior. Because we ain't playing the crayon game no more. Now we're talking the name of a country and nationality. So we talk country nationality, guess who's at the top of that spectrum? Empire Morocco's a country. And the Moroccans. Guess who's second? The United States of America and the Americans. See, when you have a country and nationality conversation, it changes the power dynamics. When you have a crayon conversation, that also changes the power dynamics. So I say to all the black Americans. If you tired of playing the crayon game, then pledge your allegiance to the Empire of Morocco and get out of the caste system. Stop asking white people to do stuff for you. Why would white people want to give up their privileges? When you yourself are playing the game calling yourself black. Stop calling yourself black and then you ain't gotta worry about the crayon color white. It's just that simple. Stop worrying about what quote unquote white people do. Because you ain't black. Why would you care what a crayon white do if you ain't the crayon black? Or crayon brown or crayon red or crayon yellow, the five crayon family. What's the five crayon family? White, black, red, brown, and yellow. Stop playing the game. Because white supremacists can only be white supremists if they got another crayon to pick on. Listen, let's talk supremacy. Because white supremacists like to talk about supremacy. But the white supremacist knows that that's a privilege, but that's not a right. Because the people of the United States are just simply what? Americans. But they don't want to just call everybody Americans. They want to stay in the caste system. Because on the caste system, the capitalists and white supremacists rule over all the crayons. So if they just simply call each other Americans. Then nobody's running the show other than the collective whole, doing it together bipartisan. So let's talk supremacy clause as I start to build up. Question, what is the purpose and intent of the supremacy clause or supreme law and procedure? We're talking supremacy. The supremacy comes under law or supremacy comes under what? An ideology. Which one reigns supreme? Law reigns supreme. Not imperialism or hegemony. Or bigotry. No, law reigns supreme. And the capitalists are scared to death of law. This is why they're trying to control the laws. I'll talk more about that today. Alright, so down here, okay, let's go to the question again. Question, what is the purpose and intent of supremacy clause? Or supreme law and procedure? Supremacy clause of what? The Constitution of the United States. Article six clause two is the supremacy clause. Right? Supremacy clause. Okay, from the top, um.
Supremacy clause, Article six clause two as follows. This constitution and the laws of the United States which shall be made in pursuance thereof. And all treaties made or which shall be made under the authority of the United States shall be the supreme law of the land. And the judges in every state shall be bound thereby. Anything in the con- constitution or laws of any state to the contrary notwithstanding.
Alright, so Article six clause two, the United States Constitution, right? Because the white supremacists. Are trying to control the constitution. White supremacists are the capitalists. And capitalists know one thing that a lot of people don't know. They know that what? Treaties are what? Treaty of supreme law of the land. Listen to me. White capitalists know that treaties are supreme law of the land. So the capitalist jobs to make sure the treaties of the Moors. Are never put into full force in effect by who? The Moors. Because then the capitalists would owe the Moors a percentage of their profits. So when they talk white supremacy, they're talking about controlling the capitalism of the country. They do not want to share with the Moors. So this right here supremacy clause is hurting them really bad because they know that the Moors treaties are supreme. Listen, okay, supremacy clause from the top. Question, what is the purpose and intent of supremacy clause? Or supreme law and procedure? Answer. The supremacy clause or supreme law supersedes, overrules, or preempts. Inferior laws and inferior procedures. So when the white supremacists are doing something, what they're doing is actually what? Inferior. Because they know laws will supersede what they're doing. This is why they, they act so antsy. This is why they seem like they're such in a rush because they just want to rush things through and, and avoid talking about the law. Because they know the constitution supersedes what they're doing. And they know treaties even supersede even the constitution. So we're talking supremacy right now. That's a very important word. Because we're talking about the rule of law. But the next question is, what law rules? It's treaties. Treaty laws and international law rules. That must be understood. Treaties and international law rules. And capitalists can't stand the fact that Moors have the most powerful treaties on planet Earth. And on top of that, international law supports the Moors. Because international law is about human rights. International law is about what? Countries having their respect. International law is about what? Being regulators of treaty language. International law acts as a regulator to make sure treaties are adhered to. So the capitalists do not like treaties and the capitalists do not like international law because the capitalists know that they cannot defeat. The Moors treaties. Listen, what I have up here, we talked about this in class one seventy-one. This is what you call poker, right? We're talking about cards. But I'm also talking about the royal flush. What's the royal status? That's the Sultan. Now, yes, he's no longer a monarch, but. The Sultan will always treat it like royalty. Because the Sultan is head of state. So in a game of cards, it's called royal flush, which is the highest hand you can have. It beats all other hands. It's called ace high, royal flush, same suit, right? So you got ace, king, queen, jack, ten, right? Ace high, same suit. Right? So the capitalist. I, either white supremist, know that they cannot beat this royal flush. What's the royal flush? Is the Moroccan Empire Morocco's constitution of the year twenty twenty-four. That's the ace. Because the constitution allows us to become what? An attachment to our treaties again. These four treaties are very powerful. But the Moors could not enforce their treaties such as the Treaty of Peace and Friendship with our country's constitution. Because the constitution sets forth the offices of the government. The constitution recognizes the Sultan's office. The constitution recognizes the executive branch. And legislative branch and judicial branch. The constitution recognizes your nationality. And what's the Moors nationality? Moroccan. But the Moors never had a constitution that recognized Moors as. Moroccans. And only Moroccans can enforce these treaties. And the capitalists have always known that. It's why they kept you in the black status. You ain't calling yourself black. I mean, if you're not calling yourself Moroccan, right? If you're not calling yourself Moroccan and being recognized by the Empire of Morocco as Moroccan, then you cannot enforce these treaties. What treaties are these? Okay, number two, Moroccan Act of the Serbes of nineteen oh six. That's the king. Number three, Moroccan Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty. That's the queen. Number four, Moroccan Treaty of Peace and Friendship eighteen thirty-six. That's the Jack. Number five, Moroccan Treaty of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty-six. That's the ten, right? Same suit, Moroccan, 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 Moroccan. The capitalists know this. This gives the Moors a right to get a percentage. Of the stock market. I'll say it again. These treaties give the Moors a right to get a percentage of the stock market. We'll talk about that another day. But what's my point? These treaties allow the Moors to get a percentage of the wealth. Of all countries that are in the jurisdiction Empire Morocco. And the capitalists know they can't stop it because it's a treaty. And treaty language is supreme law of the land. Listen, here's the Sultan. Addu al-khabib. Right? Now, what did the Sultan do? He declared independence. On behalf of what? The Empire of Morocco. Right? On behalf of the Empire of Morocco. So this is why the capitalists are starting to do the gerrymandering. This is why the capitalists are starting to bring indictments against Blackamores. They're trying to force you out of your seats of office and trying to tell you, now that your mother. And political father has told you to come home, you need to go home. The capitalists, i.e. the white supremacists, don't want you to be Americans anymore because you're adopted. Listen. This is the Sultan declaring independence.
Declaration of Independence for the Empire of Morocco. Let it be known on this day of May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. That I, the duly elected Sultan hereby declare the sovereign independence of the Empire of Morocco. Whereas the complete national territory of the empire shall be decolonized through varying stages of advancement without any interruption. The Moors Empire shall be entitled to enjoy an autonomous political status as an external state. Under the sovereign authority of the Office of the Sultan. Affirming that colonial administrations throughout the Empire of Morocco. Shall no longer have treaty power, legislative power, or extraterritorial jurisdiction. Over the Caribbean Empire and its Moroccan nationals without the express permission of the Sultan. Recalling that the multilateral Act of the Bataille Seris International Conference of April seventh nineteen oh six. Recognize and affirm the power and authority of the Sultan throughout the Empire of Morocco. Whereas the signatory powers consented by ratification to the triple principle of the sovereign independence of His Majesty the Sultan. Integrity of his domains and economic liberty without any inequality. Therefore, the Act of the Bataille Seris shall continue to be the supreme law of the land throughout the Moors Empire. To settle any territorial or sovereign disputes. Moreover, let it be known that any subject of Morocco can renounce their naturalized status. From foreign countries and federal governments for Article fifteen of the Madrid Convention of July third eighteen eighty. Whereas the Moors have a human right to choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire. By application and acceptance by the Moors government. The Moors administration shall adhere to a modern constitution in the ancient land of the Moors. The constitution shall be known as the Empire of Morocco to serve as the organic will of the indigenous Moroccan people. The constitutional powers of the interdependent three branches shall constitute the corporatibles of the Moroccan nationals. In harmony with our institutional act. Whereas the Declaration of Independence and the enactment of the express constitution shall preserve our collective sovereignty, integrity. And prosperity through an organized, dual society. It is important to note that the last known Sultan of Morocco. And the centralized government of the empire were abandoned in nineteen fifty-six by the French government and Mohammed the Fifth. By the dissolution of the Treaty of Fess. Recalling that Mohammed the Fifth became king of a new modern Ute positive territory. To be known as the Kingdom of Morocco in nineteen fifty-six. However, the high contracting party to the various Moors. However, the high contracting party to the various Moors treaties is the Empire of Morocco. And its legal personalities, they shall preserve its distinct political status as a sovereign, independent state. As the Sultan of Morocco, I declare that all other Moroccan territories are inferior to the Sharifian Empire. I further recognize that the naturalized Moors have always been the true heirs and successors to the sovereign administration of Morocco before any foreigners settled in the Moors Empire. Anything contrary is notwithstanding for centuries of law and history. Furthermore, it is important to also note that the Treaty of Fès set forth certain obligations for the French Republic to assist the Moors Government to be the administrative authority and the judicial power throughout the Sharifian Empire. However, the French government denied the Moors their treaty rights to establish a new regime under the sovereignty of Sultan per the provisions of the Act of Al-Siris of nineteen oh six and the Treaty of Fès of nineteen twelve. The French Republic's denial of the Moors treaty rights has caused the Moors to remain colonized and naturalized by the signatory powers. Its cause of inaction has led to the Moors' continued naturalized status under the civil and criminal jurisdiction of self-interested foreign colonists in Morocco. I'm convinced that the Moors are entitled to seek redress for any internationally wrongful acts constituted by colonists and obstructions. Nevertheless, in closing, let it be known that the Empire of Morocco, the Office of Sultan, and the Moors Government shall seek friendly diplomatic relations with all nations of the earth. Recalling that the Act of Al-Siris of nineteen oh six, the Covenant of the League of Nations of nineteen twenty, and the Charter of the United Nations of nineteen forty-five were all created to establish reforms of peace and security throughout the world. Standby Morocco shall play significant part in resolving problems by means of political reforms. Whereas the Act of Al-Siris recognizes the legislative power and adjudicator power of the Moors Government's original jurisdiction in matters of disputes between the states of the Sultan of Morocco. However, any high contracting party that has renounced their signature shall remain bound to Moroccan law and the customs of international law. Whereas I, the Sultan of Morocco, shall reign in the order of chaos that has plagued the Charter of the United Nations members and all other peace-loving nations. I hereby give my unwavering support to assist the Secretary General and the General Assembly in instituting political reforms to prevent disputes and punish bad actors. Whereas the Moors Consular Court, the International Court of Justice, and the International Criminal Court shall be respected and protected by the Moors Empire. The Empire of Morocco shall be, become a beacon of trust and equal partnership with all nations both small and large. The Sharifian Empire shall seek immediate diplomatic relations with the colonial administrations which have assumed the responsibility over trust territories, non-self-governing territories, and naturalized Moors. Lastly, the European States, the Arab States, and the Moors Government must find a way to inhabitate as good neighbors in the Empire of Morocco. Abdul Smith Al-Khabir, His Majesty the Sultan of Morocco, dated May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
All right, that is the Sultan in the Declaration of Independence, which has caused the capitalists to have a lot of concerns. Who are the capitalists? White supremists. What do white supremists want to do? They wanna control what? Laws, courts, economics, and social affairs of the country of the United States of America and all other countries. So they know that when the Moors declared independence, the Moors treaties have a right to intervene and stop the colonists, i.e. the capitalists, from disrupting the natural order of planet Earth. See, the Moors have a right to have a say in what's going on with what? The economics. The Moors have a right to have a say in what's going on with what? Social affairs. Because the Moors have a right to be involved with what? The laws and the courts. You see, the colonists knows that the Moors control Consular Court. The Moors get to settle disputes that the capitalists have created. And they also know that the capitalists owe a percentage to the Empire of Morocco. Owe a percentage of what? Taxes. We're talking about the taxes in the few, next few classes to come. What am I doing in this instance? I'm building up. I have to let white citizens of the United States of America know what's up. Because the federal government in the year twenty twenty-five thus far in September twenty twenty-five have yet to let the white Americans know that the Empire of Morocco has declared its independence. That the federal government of the United States is also in neglect of letting their black citizens know that the Empire of Morocco has declared independence. See, now they're back to what? The whole Juneteenth thing again. See, the United States just passed a statute to recognize Juneteenth. What is Juneteenth all about? It was Texas was the last union state to let the slaves know that they was freed by what? The Emancipation Proclamation of Lincoln. Texas is the last territory to set, to tell the slaves what was that? That there was an executive order from the President of the United States to stop slavery. Executive order. So all the other states had told their slaves except for Texas. Texas was the last. So that's why they celebrate Juneteenth because those Moors, those black Moors, those freedmen of Texas started the party when they found out about it. But yet the other Moors, the other Blackamores, already knew. You see, the United States is waiting to the last second, the last final hour to tell the blacks the truth. The United States federal government in the year twenty twenty-five is waiting to the last minute to let the white Americans know about the truth. You see, this Declaration of Independence that took place on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four just sent shockwaves straight across the United States, up into Canada, and straight across Europe, et cetera. They know that the Moors are entitled to be the beneficiaries of their land, air, and sea. Let's continue. This Declaration of Independence is what's creating problems for the capitalists. Now, the Declaration of Independence falls under a word called intertemporal law. I'm taking my time here. I gotta go much deeper. The Moors, we have to level up. What is intertemporal law? The Declaration of Independence did what? It was declared in twenty twenty-four, but it went back and grabbed what? The treaties, the history, and the estate and brought it forward to twenty twenty-four through the Declaration of Independence, which then did what? It made a claim to our history. It made a claim to our laws and regimes. And they brought it forward, right? In time, that's what intertemporal. Temporal means what? Time. Time and placement. All right, so the Moors, we have to study what intertemporal law is. It's very important to the Moors. Very important to the Moors. Okay. We're gonna start from the top.
Intertemporal law refers to the legal principles that govern the applicability of laws over time. It regulates, it regulates conflicts of laws relating to time, determining which law is applicable at which time, especially in cases that occurred before a law's creation or entry into force. In international law, it accounts for changes that have taken place since a treaty was formulated, ensuring that legal facts are assessed based on the law in effect at the time they were created. This doctrine is crucial for understanding how legal norms apply to past events, particularly when legal rules have changed significantly.
All right, from the top again.
Intertemporal law refers to the legal principles that govern the applicability of laws over time. It regulates conflicts of laws relating to time, determining which law is applicable at which time, especially in cases that occurred before a law's creation or entry into force. In international law, it accounts for changes that have taken place since a treaty was formulated, ensuring that legal facts are assessed based on the law in effect at the time they were created. This doctrine is crucial for understanding how legal norms apply to past events, particularly when legal rules have changed significantly.
Okay, what's the interpretation here? Under intertemporal law, so it's about time. And what time and placement was the law? When did that law come into effect? And how does that law affect other laws? It's all about time. For example, listen. Intertemporal law refers to the legal principles that govern the applicability of laws over time. It regulates conflicts of laws relating to time, determining which law is applicable at which time. Especially in cases that occurred before a law's creation or entry into force. So you see right there? So there was something that was created, right? There was a law that was created. And now it's trying to enter into force. What law was created? A new law. See that? Before a law before a law's creation or entry into force. What law was created? Okay, it was what? It was the Constitution for the Empire of Morocco. That law was created after the treaties were already written. The Constitution of Morocco was drafted and signed in twenty twenty-four. But yet, we're saying that this constitution gets to go backwards and do what? We're saying our constitution, Moroccan Empire Morocco's constitution under intertemporal law of twenty twenty-four gets to go back to the year what? Seventeen eighty-six, eighteen thirty-six, eighteen eighty, and nineteen oh six, et cetera. And lay claim to those laws and bring them to the present. That's called intertemporal law. How do you enforce laws that were already set forth before this new law was enacted? The constitution itself is Moroccan law. The constitution is fundamental law. But since it's a new law, it gets to go backwards and grab all these treaties and put them into full force and effect because of this new law. Okay, so that's intertemporal law. Listen. Listen. Moors need to understand what intertemporal law is. Intertemporal law refers to the legal principles that govern the applicability of laws over time. So over time, these treaties are old. It regulates conflicts of laws. So how does it, how does intertemporal law regulate a conflict? Well, well, the question might be, well, if you're saying these Moors. Let's go back. If you say, oh, this is Moors' new constitution of twenty twenty-four, can't go back and enforce these four treaties? Then you say, okay, then tell me which constitution can. It doesn't exist. So if you say the Moors' twenty twenty-four constitution can't go back and enact these treaties, then tell me which Moroccan treaty can. Cause I can tell you right now, the constitution that cannot is the constitution of the Kingdom of Morocco. Because the King Morocco's name is not mentioned nowhere in these treaties. You see that? There's no King Morocco mentioning Treaty of Peace and Friendship. There's no treaty, there's no Kingdom of Morocco mentioned in the Madrid Convention. There's no Kingdom of Morocco mentioned in the Act of Al-Seris. So tell me which Moroccan treaty can lay claim to old treaties? Or should I say, which Moroccan constitution can lay claim to old treaties? See, they can't answer that question. Which makes their legal argument what? Immaterial. Their legal argument is immaterial because no one else can make a claim to the treaties, but who? Moors. Only Moors can lay claim to the treaties. Listen. Listen, here's the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, seventeen eighty-six. Watch how fast I go through this. I'm gonna go through these four treaties real fast. Pay attention. So this is the Treaty of seventeen eighty-six. Who are they talking about in here? Okay, let's go down to Article six. They're talking about who? Moors. Uh huh. That's seventeen eighty-six. Okay, let's go to eighteen thirty-six. Basically the same treaty. Who are they talking about in the same treaty? Let's go down to Article six. Who are they talking about? Moors. That's what? Eighteen thirty-six. Let's go to the Madrid Convention of what? Eighteen eighty. Who are they talking about in the treaty? Okay, let's go down here. Who are they talking about? All right. Let, let's, let's go talk about this. Let's talk about it. Who are they talking about? The subjects of Morocco, which are who? Who are they? Who, who are the subjects of Morocco? Who? On Article fifteen, who are the subjects of Morocco who have been naturalized? Who are they? They're the Moors. Article nine. See right there? Moorish employees or Moorish servants. So it's the Moors. See that? M-O-O-R. Moor. Moorish. So this treaty is about the Moors of eighteen eighty. Okay, now let's go to nineteen oh six, the Act of Al-Seris. Nineteen oh six. Who is the Act of Al-Seris all about? Okay, let's go down here to what? We're gonna go down to Article two. Right off the top. Who are they talking about? The Moors. The Moors. Moorish. Moorish. And what's the Moorish? Nationality is Moorish is an adjective. Moorish is an adjective. So what's the true nationality? Moroccans. You see that? That's nineteen oh six. Who else? Who else? Let's go to another treaty. Let's just throw the Treaty of Fès in there, okay? Nineteen twelve. It's talking about who? Okay, you go down to where? Article one talks about what? The Moors. Article one says it shall include the organization and a reformed Sharifian Moors. You see that? A reformed Sharifian Moors. What's a Moors? Okay. What's a Moors? I'm going through this quickly. What's a Moors? Moors is a noun, right? Okay, you know.
Moorsan noun. Variants or moorsan or less commonly moorsan, plural, the S. The native Moroccan government. Collectively privileged peoples from whom Moroccan state officials are recruited.
All right, from the top again.
Moorsan, a noun. Moorsan is a variance or moorsan or less commonly moorsan, plural, S. The native Moroccan government. Collectively privileged peoples from whom Moroccan state officials are recruited.
All right, so the Moorsan is who? The natives. The native who? Moors. Who's nationality is what? Moroccan. So the natives who are running what? The government? Right? Because they're being what? Recruited to be a part of what? The Moors are being recruited to be what? The Moroccan state officials. Oh, you say, well, I didn't say Moors. I didn't see, I didn't see moorsan and the word Moors tied together. Okay, pause right there. Cause you got the naysayers out there. Pause right there. So what I, that is saying about no Moors. Okay, pause right there. You see this word right here? Recruited. See this word, recruited? Pay attention. Word, Moors must become wordsmiths. See this word recruited? Pay attention. Word, moors must become words, yes. They're being recruited. The Mozen is being recruited. Okay, pay attention right there. Let's go back to the treaty of nineteen oh six, Act of Saris. Who, who's the police? Who is the police? Uh, Declaration relative to the organization of the police. You know what the police is? These people that come from what? The Mozen. No, article two.
Article two, the police shall be under the sovereign authority of His Majesty the Sultan. It shall be recruited by the Mozen from Moorish Mohammedans, commanded by Moorish Cades, and distributed in the eight ports open to commerce.
All right, so, so right here, the word Mozen. It's tied to what? Moorish. And the Mozen is a recruitment. To be a part of the Moorish government, of the state. They're being recruited. Who have been recruited? The moors to run what? The government. The Mozen is the state government. Who's running the government? The moors. And they're being recruited. Let's go back to the definition. Okay, no, from the top.
Mozen is a noun. Mozen variants or Maqzen with a Z. Or less commonly Maqzen, M A K Z E N. Plural S. The native Moroccan government collectively privileged peoples from whom Moroccan state officials are recruited.
Uh huh. So the moors are Moroccans. They run the government of the Mozen. So going back to intertemporal law. Under intertemporal law. The moors have introduced a, a law that they created. See, the creation of a law. What was created? Our constitution. See? Creation of a law is now trying to enter into force. What we're trying to enter into force? The constitution. That's a new law. But it gets to go backwards and grab the treaties, cause all the treaties talking about who? Moors. Can't nobody else make that claim to the treaties except for who? The moors. Listen. This is why the capitalists, I, either white supremists are panicking because the Declaration of Independence allows for the constitution of the Empire Morocco that's ran by the moors, i.e. the Mozen, or the state officials get to now enforce what? The Moroccan Act of Saris of nineteen oh six. The moors get to enforce what? The Moroccan Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty. The moors get to enforce what? The Moroccan Treaty of Peace and Friendship of eighteen thirty six. The moors get to enforce what? The Moroccan Treaty of Peace and Friendship of seventeen eighty six. That's a royal flush that nobody can stop. Cause can't nobody else claim to be the moors. The Arabs can't do it. Only moors can do it. Now, listen. Listen, the moors and the Arabs have always worked together. What I have up here, you see this? Who's that? That's a Moor. In the year nineteen forty, I'll say it again. That's a Moor in the year nineteen forty of what? What is, what is this? Where's this label at? Right here. The Sultan of Morocco, Mohammed the Fifth. And troops protect France nineteen forty. Nineteen forty, the Moorish government is still protecting the Sultan. Is still protecting and were protecting France, cause France was controlling the Treaty of Fes. We're talking about the Treaty of Fes, hold on. So this is the Sultan of Morocco and troops protect France nineteen forty. It's about a one minute video. Check it out. What am I about to show you? First of all, proper context. This is Great Britain's news channel. The Great Britain's casting this out, right? So it's a program, they're broadcasting. And they're gonna talk about the Sultan of, and the moors, right? Going to go help France fight the Germans. But what is it that I want you to see? I want you to see how the moors around the Sultan, even in nineteen forty. The moors are everywhere. Listen.
This is the German British News presenting the world to the world. Outpost of the French colonial empire, a stronghold of the ideals for which the Allies are fighting. In French Morocco, the Sergeant Sidi Mohamed goes to the mosque for prayers. These are the men who stand by France in the fight for freedom. Fearless swordsman who will strike at German tyranny when the hour is right, for they know what German rule would mean. He maintains the tradition of the past, but the Sultan bowers to progress when he makes his first fight in a blade.
All right, so what did you see? Moors. Moors. Let's watch again. Listen.
This is the German British News presenting the world to the world. Outpost of the French colonial empire, a stronghold of the ideals for which the Allies are fighting. In French Morocco, the Sergeant Sidi Mohamed goes to the mosque for prayers. These are the men who stand by France in the fight for freedom. Fearless swordsman who will strike at German tyranny when the hour is right, for they know what German rule would mean. He maintains the tradition of the past, but the Sultan bowers to progress when he makes his first fight in a blade.
All right, so what are we learning? And even in nineteen forty. You've got all these moors that, that are all around the Sultan. Watch. You see that? There's the Sultan. And these are nothing but moors all around him. I know it's a terrible image like that. But these are nothing but moors all around the Sultan. It's nineteen forty. Not sixteen forty. Nineteen forty. Listen to me. Was that a bunch of Arabs around him? No. So who had the Sultan's back? The moors. Why? Because it's none but the moors mentioned all throughout the treaties. The moors run the government. But the white supremists, i.e. the capitalists, do not want the moors to know their true identity. You see, over in what's commonly known as Morocco Fes, Fes Morocco, or in Africa, those moors still knew they were moors. But the Sultan, starting in the year eighteen fifty six. All the way up to eighteen eighty, the Sultans of Old had allowed the Europeans to naturalize the moors throughout the other continents. And change the moors nationality. Those moors didn't even know, such as the moors, such as Dred Scott. Dred Scott's a Moor, but he didn't know. Because the colonists were making sure the moors couldn't do what? Read or write. That way they need no knowledge of self. This is why we say Islam. What does Islam mean? It ain't got nothing to do with religion. It means what? It's an acronym for what? I. Self-law. And master. What does that mean? You're mastering self, but the only way to master yourself, you have to know who you are. We know that we are moors. We ain't black. Islam means I know myself. And I'm trying to better myself. And the first thing I have to understand is that I'm a Moor, and Moor is a short title for Moroccan. And therefore, if you're trying to be Moroccan again with the understanding you've been naturalized by a foreign country, then now you gotta pledge your allegiance to the Empire Morocco and come and support the Sultan again. See, the Europeans have respect for the Sultan and the Moorish government, but the Europeans do not have respect for blacks. They don't have to respect blacks, cause blacks don't respect themselves, cause they don't know themselves. Now that's not to no fault of the blacks. But the ignorance is bliss. The, the blacks must understand they've been black and they used to be moors. Now they're black of moors. The blacks are moors. You gotta drop the crayon black and just call yourself a Moor, because the Europeans know exactly who you are. They know you're moors. And now that we've declared our independence, now the Sultan is back because it's Abdul Smith Al Kabir now sitting in the office, cause it's no longer a monarchy. So we as moors gotta come back together and support Sultan. He's head of state. Let's watch again.
This is the German British News presenting the world to the world. Outpost of the French colonial empire, a stronghold of the ideals for which the Allies are fighting. In French Morocco, the Sergeant Sidi Mohamed goes to the mosque for prayers. These are the men who stand by France in the fight for freedom. Fearless swordsman who will strike at German tyranny when the hour is right, for they know what German rule would mean. He maintains the tradition of the past, but the Sultan bowers to progress when he makes his first fight in a blade.
All right, souls. That was nineteen forty. Moors everywhere. Moors everywhere. Listen. So now we've got our Declaration of Independence, right? Because the Empire Morocco's a country had to get out the Shadow of Graves so we could restore the office of what? Sultan. We have to huddle around the Sultan, cause he's head of state. He holds an office on all of our behalf. Europeans know exactly how powerful the office of Sultan is. Listen. You see, that Declaration of Independence, under intertemporal law, went back to grab what? The treaties. The Act of Saris, it went back to grab the treaties, but we needed a constitution. This is the Empire Morocco's constitution. Right? Empire Morocco's constitution. Then you got the United States constitution. Then you got the Act of Saris, which is the most powerful treaty between the Europeans and the moors. And then you've got the Charter of the United Nations, right? Which is a representative of international law, the what? The customary norms of international law. Then you've got treaty law. And international law and treaty law supersedes and preempts what? The Constitution of the United States. Because even the Constitution of the United States says treaties is a supreme law of the land. So since treaty supreme law of the land, that mean the capitalists and the white supremists know they have to abide by the moors treaties and the moors what? Constitution. And guess who protects our treaties? It is the customary norms of international law, the Charter of the United Nations. Make sure these treaties are binding on the colonists, i.e. the capitalists who want to control the moors. What? What did the capitalists want to control? What is it that the capitalists want to control? Okay, let's go back to the case. At the International Court of Justice, in the case of right of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco, France versus the United States of America. Remember now, this is the case, so I took a, I took this corner right here and I zoomed in. What the capitalists want to control? Well, first they want to control and maintain a protectorate over the moors. They call the moors black. They blackened the moors instead of the moors binding out, they're Moroccans. Because the colonists want to control the currency, the economy, and the treaties of what? Of the moors. You see, the capitalists want to control the currency and the economy of the Empire Morocco in the absence of the moors. In the absence of the Sultan, who's also Moroccan. She has to understand what's going on right now. Let's take it to the board. You see? Treaties and the customary norms of international law is a supreme law of the land, air, and water. The acronym is Law, L A W. Land, air, water is Law. You see, white supremacy is an ideology created by the capitalist society of the rich and wealthy free white persons. We learned about that. Free white persons of the year seventeen ninety Naturalization Act. You see, the capitalists want to control the laws, courts, economics, and social affairs of the world. However, the capitalists are aware that the Moroccan treaties of the Empire Morocco clearly states that the Sultan and the Moorish government is entitled to a percentage of the great enterprise and its wealth. Let's take it from the top. Now, before I read it, remember now. Colonists are trying to control the currency, the economy. They want to make sure the moors stand a protectant to be black instead of being Moroccans. They want to make sure the moors can enforce their own treaties, because the only way moors can enforce their treaties, they have to be Moroccans of Morocco. Right? So on our Declaration of Independence, listen. On our Declaration of Independence. Declaration of Independence, we put our constitution in full force and effect, right? In order to control the treaties again. With the support of international law to make one, two, three, these three things binding on the United States. Even their own constitution says treaties supreme law of the land. So the colonists catching hell, even under their own constitution. They cannot supersede their own constitution. This is why unfortunately, the capitalists are controlling the federal government of the year twenty twenty five, and they're trying to undermine the constitution. The Trump administration is trying to undermine the constitution of the United States because he knows that the treaties is a supreme law of the land. And if the, if the treaties supreme law of the land, that means the moors are the supreme beings of the land. But yet, the moors come in peace. Because the moors understand what? What do the moors understand? We understand that the treaty is about what? Peace and friendship, which means we're willing to share this land, but the colonists do not like to share. Listen. Treaties and the customary norms of international law is a supreme law of the land, air and water. The acronym is Law, L A W. White supremacy is an ideology created by the capitalist society of the rich and wealthy free white persons. Capitalists want to control the laws, courts, economics, and social affairs of the world. However, the capitalists are aware that the Moroccan treaties of the Empire Morocco clearly states that the Sultan and the Moorish government is entitled to, to a percentage of the great enterprise and its wealth. Now obviously, today we didn't talk about the percentage of taxes that the United States of America owes the moors. We'll talk about that as we start to read over the case of France versus the United States of America. Right now. Listen. I'm ready to go a little deeper. I'm still building up. Listen. I still gotta go a little deeper, cause I gotta let people know what's going on with this gerrymandering, et cetera. What I'm about to explain is what you call agnostic. Agnostic means I'm going to take an unbiased approach. I'm gonna take a middle ground to try to explain to you what's going on with this thing called the separation of church and state. Agnostic means I'm trying to be a neutral person to talk about the separation of church and state. Now, the reason why I'm bringing this up is because it's very important to understand how the white supremists. Now, the reason why I'm bringing this up is because it's very important to understand how the white supremacists think. They know they have to double down right now, because they gotta try to fight back, to try to keep the Moors from rising up. So you have to catch some of the symbology of what they're doing right now. Catch the signs and symbols. Catch the dog whistles. I will show you one of the overt themes that the white supremacists, i.e. the capitalists, because white supremacists are just simply capitalists, they want to run the money, they want to run the capital. So they're using the Holy Bible to send dog whistles. It's very important I talk about this, but keep in mind, it's agnostic. I'm trying to remain unbiased and stay in the middle to talk about what's happening to blacks, whites, and this other small party called capitalists, which are the white supremacists. And the white supremacists are trying to control who? The blacks and the whites. See, white supremacists don't care about whites or blacks, they only care about green. Listen. So be patient with me as I explain this, because you have a lot of people who are going to be offended. But at the same time, you have a lot of people who are going to be what? Enlightened. Pay attention. Uh, from the top. King James Version sixteen eleven. "The capitalist society of white supremacists is attempting to control the world through the words of heaven and earth, which allows the continued subjugation of the black Moors." Genesis one, number one, "In the beginning, God created the heaven and the earth." "Two, and the earth was without form and void, and darkness was upon the face of the deep, and the spirit of God moved upon the face of the waters." "Three, and God said, 'Let there be light,' and there was light." "Four, and God saw the light, that it was good, and God divided the light from the darkness." Alright, thank you very much. What's happening? First of all, this is the King James Version. That's very important to note. King James Version, so who's making this version? A king. What's a king? A monarch. A monarch is what? Head of state on earth. Kings are the head of state on earth. Listen. "The capitalist society of white supremacists is attempting to control the world through the words of heaven and earth, which allows the continued subjugation of the black Moors." Pay attention. What's happening? White supremacists are interpreting the Bible in a way where they say whites are supposed to do what? Subdue the blacks. White supremacists are reading the Bible in a way where they think it gave them a mandate to subdue the blacks, listen to the interpretation of what they see. And now you'll see why they keep carrying around the Bible so much. Now pay attention. I'm being neutral, it's interpretation. Listen. From the top, King James Version sixteen eleven, "The capitalist society of white supremacists is attempting to control the world through the words of heaven and earth," two legal personalities, you see that? Moors must become wordsmiths. King James is talking about heaven, and he's talking about earth. There's a kingdom in heaven, but there's also a kingdom on earth. And the kings, i.e. heads of state, are running the earth. Are you following me? Two separate legal personalities. There's a government of heaven, government of earth. Kings run the earth, listen. This is what white supremacists are reading. From the top, "The capitalist society of white supremacists is attempting to control the world through the words of heaven and earth, which allows the continued subjugation of the black Moors." Now. Now I'm gonna read the actual words from Genesis one. Number one, verse one. "In the beginning, God created heaven and the earth." So God created two legal personalities, created heaven and created earth. God has his own kingdom in heaven, who's running the earth? Kingsmen, the kingsmen. Number two, verse two. "And the earth was without form and void, and darkness was upon the face of the deep." Listen. So what is this right here? How are white supremacists reading this? "And the earth was without form and void," so the earth was void. And but, listen, but darkness was upon the face. Who has dark faces? Moors. But catch the wordplay, this is how white supremacists read the Bible. "And the earth was without form and void." Why do they look at those verses and, "The earth is void." Oh, pay attention, pay attention, it's called the doctrine of discovery. Nova from the top.
The doctrine of discovery and terra nullius. The doctrine of discovery was the principle used by European colonizers, starting in the fifteenth century, to stake a claim to lands beyond the European continent. The doctrine gave them the right to claim land that was deemed vacant for their nation. Land was considered terra nullius, vacant land. It had not yet been occupied by Christians. Such vacant lands could be defined as discovered, and as a result, sovereignty, title, and jurisdiction could be claimed. In doing so, the doctrine of discovery invalidated the sovereignty of indigenous nations and gave Christians the right to subjugate and confiscate the lands of indigenous peoples.
Alright, so terra nullius, right? Terra nullius means land with no people, it's void. It has no form, there's nobody there. Terra nullius means there's no Moors there, they don't see the Moors, why not? Because they only, they only recognize who? Christians when they were colonizing, if you ain't Christian, they ain't even recognized that you existed. Listen. So when they read, when they're reading the Bible, talking white supremacy, they say right here, Genesis one, verse two, "And the earth was without form and void, there was no people." But darkness was upon the face. So who has the dark faces? The Moors. And since the Moors wasn't Christian, they say, "Well, we're taking this land on a terra nullius to say, you Moors don't exist, because you ain't Christian, and if you ain't Christian, we're going to exterminate you." Pay attention, this is how white supremacists read the Bible. It says, version, I mean, um, Genesis one, uh, three, "And God said, 'Let there be light,' and there was light." Listen, verse three, "And God said, 'Let there be light,' and there was light." Listen, verse four, "And God saw the light, that it was good, and God divided the light from the darkness." You see what happened? So the white supremacists think that they're the light. They think they're the light, and they think the light is good. So they say, well, they're gonna divide the light from the darkness, they're dividing whites from the blacks. And you say, man, you made that stuff up. Ah, timeout. Oh, I made that up, huh? Okay, listen. Let's go to Etymology Dictionary, shall we? Okay. Online Etymology Dictionary, type in the word, white. Oh, okay. White, okay, now you come down to where it says what? White, right? What is the complexion of white? What is the, white people, white people are what? Light complexion, white people are light, light complexion. So, when you go to the Bible, these white people think white racist people go to the Bible, white supremacists say, oh, we gotta separate the light, the light from the darkness. Well, you say, well, darkness ain't got nothing to do with Moors, oh, timeout! Oh, Jay Bay, making stuff up, okay, timeout. Now let's look at the word what? Negro, 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 who, what about negroes? What about these blacks? Okay. So negro, now, they say what? They're black skinned, right, black skinned, but what are they really calling them? Watch this. They call them what? Black is what? Dark. So white is light, and black is dark. And the Bible talks about separating and dividing the light from the dark, so they're saying they gotta separate whites from blacks. But the negroes are who? Who are negroes? Who are negroes? I'm talking to the white supremacists right now, the United States. Who are the negroes, white supremacists? Oh, you already know, they're who? The blacks. But who are the blacks? I'm talking to you, white supremacists. Who are the blacks and the negroes, white supremacists? I'm talking to you, they are Moors and black of Moors. So you go back to the Bible. They are separating what? The whites from the blacks, but they're really separating what? The white supremacists are separating themselves from the Moors. Their job is to keep the Moors what? Subjugated. Oh, Jay Bay, you made that up. Okay, let's go look at it, on the white, on the word white, it has what? White supremacy, on the Etymology Dictionary, uh, Nova from the top.
White supremacy is attested from eighteen sixty eight, John H. Van Ervey, M.D., white supremacy and negro subordination, New York, eighteen sixty eight. White chauvinism is by nineteen forty six, and white flight of Caucasians out of inner city areas is attested by nineteen sixty six. American English white privilege, preferential treatment of Caucasians is from nineteen sixty. Originally in South African context, although there is an isolated American use from nineteen twenty eight.
Pause, thank you very much. So white supremacy, which is a very small group of whites, which is an extremist party that hides under the banner of Republican, and they make Republicans look bad. And what do white supremacists think their job is to do? Is to do what? Subordinate negroes. And who are negroes? Moors. But white supremacists call themselves the light, and the light has to divide itself from the dark negro. You see that? This is why white supremacists always carry around the Bible, listen. This is why they keep talking about the Bible, because they're reading these verses and interpreting as if they have a mandate to separate themselves from black people. They just want to tell you that, listen. Listen. What else I got here? See what the bottom says? Uh, Nova.
Genesis one, John one, "In the beginning was the word, and the word was with God, and the word was God."
Read it again.
Genesis one, John one, one, "In the beginning was the word, and the word was with God, and the word was God."
Okay, so Genesis one, John one. The white supremacists are using this version. Pay attention. "In the beginning was the word, and the word was with God, and the word was God," so keep in mind, the way the white supremacists look at it, they say the word God means what? Government ordinance department. So the white supremacists are trying to run the government, because the government controls what? The word. Through what? Constitutions, treaties, and statutes. G-O-D is an acronym for government ordinance department, and who's trying to run the government? The white supremacists, so they can control the words. Under John one, because John one gave them instructions. How do I know? Watch this. John one, Genesis means the beginning. Watch this. Don't get sensitive for me. Watch. Bang. Who is that? Who is that? That's Donald J. Trump. Holding what? A Bible. Now, see, you look into the left, people paying attention to him and this Bible. Because Donald J. Trump is what? A capitalist. Do you see what's behind him? St. John Church. You see that? I know it's a little fuzzy. I know you can't see that. But it says St. John Church, you can go find these images online, it's St. John's Church. So you think he's just standing there by happenstance? It's a dog whistle. For the white supremacists to understand under John, that John does what? Who is Donald Trump representing himself as being in that moment? He's representing himself as what? John is what? Genesis John one, "In the beginning was the word, and the word was with God, and the word was God." So he's standing on the St. John's Church, saying that John, he's controlling what? The word. Of what? He wants to control the constitution, the laws and the courts. Because he's a capitalist. And what do capitalists do? They're all about what? White superiority, so they control what? Laws, courts, economics, and social affairs. There's no disrespect to Donald Trump, but he's just a proxy. He's carrying out the marching orders of the capitalist society of, of who? Of who? Who is he, who is he supporting right now? He's supporting the rich and the wealthy. He's supporting the rich and the wealthy. Because they feel as though they are the free white persons, because they're the richest and the most wealthy. But they don't want to give the Moors a percentage of the wealth, because they know the Moors treaties mandated. So this is what you call a dog whistle. It's going over everybody's heads, that Donald Trump is trying to separate what? Under gerrymandering, he's trying to separate what? The whites from the blacks. He's, he's issuing what? Indictments to remove blacks from office, he's dividing, because he's using the words of this Bible, listen. Who is that? Oh, that's the movie Django. In the movie Django, the slaver was carrying around a Bible. And he had a whip. And he was so religious that he's even penning pages of the Bible and parables onto his body, he's embodying white supremacy by interpreting the Bible as if it gave him the power to keep the darks in check. Listen. Who's gotta keep white supremacists in check, though? Who keeps white supremacists in check? Pay attention, watch this. Uh-oh, uh-oh, uh-oh. Uh-oh. Oh, look at this ten. Look at this ten. Okay. Alright, who, who we got? All right, who we got here? All right. It's the movie Django. You got a German coming on, he's Caucasian, Anglo-Saxon. He parted up with a Moor. It's the German who gave the Moor the long rifle. It was the German going around doing what? He was a what? Bounty hunter. He was collecting white bodies. He could not stand white supremists. He literally shot Calvin Candy in the movie. He committed a crime. That was murder. But he couldn't stand white supremists. This is what made it so easy for him to shoot them, dead or alive, with the war. Dead or alive, he's like, pah, to shoot them. Because he couldn't stand white supremists. You gotta see what's happening here? So what needs to happen? The Moors and the good whites, right? The Germans, the whites, white, good white people. Listen to me. The good-hearted white people have to partner up with the Moors in order to put an end to the capitalist regime. It's the capitalist society is making the whole world be in turmoil right now. You gotta see what's happening. This image is everything you need to know that even the Europeans can't stop the supremists by themselves. The Europeans can't stop the white supremists by themselves. The Moors can't stop the white supremists by themselves. Only the good whites and the Moors can come together to stop the capitalist society like the movie The Matrix. You gotta come together and fight for what's right, for planet Earth. The human beings of planet Earth, the ten or eleven billion people on planet Earth deserve better than allowing the colonists, i.e. the capitalists, i.e. the white supremacists to control the whole planet. We, the planet, gotta come together. You must understand, this means something right here. This is working together, that's sharing. You know who this represents? That's John F. Kennedy. That's Lyndon Johnson. That's Ann Johnson from class one seventy one, that's Ann Johnson in Norfolk. So there's a lot of good white people out there that ain't down with the foolishness of white supremacy. But I'm telling all the good white people out there right now. You're gonna need the Moors more today than ever before. Because the capitalists are laying off white people too. White people losing their jobs. White people got nineteen years in on their job. They got one more year to go before they get their pension and retire. And guess what the company's doing? Filing bankruptcy, going out of business. You just stuck around thirty years, then you gonna get that big retirement. Then you get the notice in the mail, oh, we're going out of business. You're like, wait, wait, timeout. I gave you thirty years of my life. I was looking forward to my retirement payment. And you saying you're just gonna shut the whole company down on a bankruptcy? See, regular white people are under attack too. So, so Moors and Europeans, the good Europeans, we gotta come together and deal with these capitalists. That's the moral of this story. So I'm telling all the white people of the United States of America, you have to support the Moors. I.e. you have to support the Empire of Morocco as a country. You have to support the Moorish government because we're here to help. We'll continue to talk about the treaties of the Empire of Morocco. We'll continue to read about France versus United States of America, which is a case from the ICG. But if you don't remember nothing else I've said today, please understand the Moors come in peace. We're looking to share. We wanna be a value add. The Sultan's Declaration of Independence talked about helping the United Nations to bring back peace and security in these regions. The Empire of Morocco is here to support the International Court of Justice. The Empire of Morocco is here to support the International Criminal Court. But at the same time, the world has to support the Moorish Council of Court. We must work as a tandem. That must be understood. We gotta get back to this or we're all going to perish and become what? Territorialists. We're all gonna be void if the capitalists have their way. I am with that. It's long.